Okay. Okay. I want to leave this.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, why a nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would just take your last. Okay, um, I'd like to call the meeting to order at seven o'clock. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our last board meeting? Which would have been November twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
I'll make that motion. Now, seven?
All in favor?
Aye.
One thing I did forget to say, uh, public participation, we give you five minutes to speak. Uh, trustee Dabern is the one that does the timing for that. So like, you know, when it gets close to your five-minute point. Uh, please make sure everyone, your cell phones are on. So not going off. And, uh, that being said, Christine, correspondence.
Um, the track copy of the minutes from the November twenty-fifth meeting have been distributed. I received the water report for November two thousand twenty-four from Frank Valentino. We received Bank of New York Mellon collateral statements for the weeks of eleven twelve, eleven eighteen, eleven twenty-five, and twelve-two, and also for the whole month of November. The fire call history report for October two thousand twenty-four was completed by Deputy Clerk Secretary, Deputy Clerk Fire Secretary. The fire protection contract for two thousand twenty-five has been sent over to the town of Mount Hope for their review. Um, we have received a proposed updated schedule of fees from Javier Rojas for the board's review. We have received, and that I believe I distributed to all of you. Um, we have received the two, the twenty-twenty-five Town of Mount Hope Village Otisville Fuel Purchase Agreement from the town of Mount Hope for the board's consideration tonight, and there are no changes to last year. The mortgage tax payment in the amount of eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirteen cents has been received from the county. The VSW has paid their one-dollar lease for the Veterans Memorial Park for this year. Um, we received one programming change from Spectrum Cable. Um, and we've also received our AIM payment from New York State in the amount of six thousand five hundred and sixty-one dollars, which is the same as last year. And we also received a letter from the owner of water account number one thirty-six regarding a request for a payment arrangement. They had a leak at their house, and they received a bill of eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents. Uh, she's requesting to pay four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and twenty-three cents, which she has, and then a hundred dollars each month for January, February, March, and April. Um, so she will be all paid out by the end of, um, by the end of the fiscal year. And she did pay the larger payment today, the four hundred and thirty-nine twenty-three. That's all I have.
Alright, thanks, Christine. Um, I guess we'll, let's just talk about this. Might as well, uh, just go over. So. Yeah, okay. That's mine. Yeah, we'll wait, we'll wait it out. Um, I'm gonna wait for Frank, so I'm just gonna mix it up a little bit, so. Rob, how you doing?
Evening, everybody. Uh, November calls, we had two gas leaks, fourteen medical, one illegal burn, two wires jammed, two MBAs, two mutual aid calls, two automatic alarms, total of twenty-five calls, two months. Drills, we had firefighter survival, uh, BLF and chimney fires last month. I think Brian reported that. Uh, this month, uh, the twentieth, November twenty-ninth, we delivered Santa to the town Christmas tree. Uh, December sixth, to the firehouse of the Billings tree. We had our Santa run this Saturday, and yesterday we had our pancakes with, uh, Santa. Of course, a success. And December fifteenth, we're gonna be doing the Toys for Tots with you guys, with that down to the train station. That's all I have.
Just something about the Toys for Tots. Um, I wanna talk to, it could be after the meeting. We might not be going to Walch Hill, we might go to Port Juris. It's gonna rain, as John just told me beforehand, so, um, we'll figure that out. But I'm not sure which one we're gonna deliver to, that's all. Let's, all of us can talk, alright? Fair enough. Alright, Kara, I missed you, um, Town of Mount Hope.
Um, at our last board meeting, we awarded, um, Resident Recovery Services events to, to Miss Lane High School employees who assisted the lights in the edifying room, who was choking, yes, Fred Goodall, and, um, just Orange County Sheriff stationed at the school, and Nurse Heather Post. And then we had a public hearing on January sixth of two thousand twenty-five regarding the revised off-road vehicle law.
Thank you. Um, I'll go police, Kurt, let me know he wasn't gonna be here. Wasn't feeling well tonight. Um, so let's add someone. Javier, how's it going?
Good.
Have you met everyone on the board?
Yes, uh, it's a four.
This is, uh, Mr. Klaus.
Alright, um, as we say, I have, uh, sent out a proposal for new fees. Everybody got to see them. I'm just here basically if you guys have any questions regarding the fees. Uh, the two additions that I proposed was for siding and windows. That just basically, so we can adhere to the two thousand twenty energy code. That's what everybody, um, in New York City is pushing for. Um, what that is, is to make sure that, uh, whether it's the siding or the windows that is being installed on the houses are for the right sound that we are. The companies can be moving windows across the country just based on their, um, inventory stack. So, uh, it's a very, it's the same application, and all that the, uh, department requires is to get the right specifications of the windows, so we can invite them and make sure that they are adhering to the snow load, the wind load, and stuff like that. Uh, the second one was for a change of occupant on businesses. Uh, that just to adhere, so we can have more control if a new business is coming into town. It requires that they provide us a basic sketch of a floor plan, where there are, uh, how many exits they have, smoke detectors, carbon monoxide, and, uh, fire extinguishers. Basically, it's on the fire code of two thousand twenty as well, and we're just gonna be implementing it just to adhere to those codes. And, uh, the last one that I just got from the attorney was adopting an affidavit of compliance for smoke detectors and carbon monoxide on multi-dwelling, uh, houses, whether it's one, uh, two-family, or the multi that we have with, uh, all the apartments. Just, it's gonna stream like the process when we go into fire safety inspection. Instead of, uh, myself having to go to every single tenant to make sure they have a working, uh, a smoke and carbon monoxide detector, we can give this to the property manager, and they will have to basically tell us, yes, they have a smoke detectors, um, based on how big the, the complex is. They also will have to provide a smoke detector and a carbon monoxide on the common hallways, because that's the main of ignorance for them. Uh, that's basically, if you guys have any questions, I'll be more than happy to.
I just wanna add, the reason that sidings and windows came up is because there's nothing right now on books here.
Correct.
And when you first came, you saw some work going on on Highland Avenue, and that's where the question came up.
The application that we were providing to the residents, it does state it, windows and siding on the application, but it wasn't a fee associated, so that was how we came up with this issue that, uh, how do we go about having somebody apply for a permit when we don't have an actual fee associated to that permit?
Okay.
I have a few questions.
Sure, absolutely.
Um, we'll start at the bottom. So, the, um, the affidavit.
Yes.
We will be given a copy of that to look at?
Absolutely. It's, yeah, I, I literally just got it from the attorney, so I can, I can submit it to Christine, and she can.
Sure.
Yeah. It's, it's very standard, it's nothing.
So, my understanding that this would apply to two-family and above?
Correct.
And did you say that you wouldn't have to inspect to verify it?
No, I won't, it's still go to, to the physical inspection.
Oh, okay.
But that just because, based on the day of the time of, uh, that tenant may not be there. So instead of me having to go multiple times for one or two payments.
Yes, that's right.
That will, it's from like the process.
And, and that's good that it includes two-family and above, because in, we probably have had time to look at it, but in our zoning, anything above one family is considered multiple, so that, that is consistent with it. Um, the change of occupancy. Does that, I just wanna make sure I'm understanding what that is. Is, if I have a two-family house, okay, we'll say that, and somebody moves in, moves out, and somebody else moves in, is that what you mean by change of occupancy?
No, no, that will only be restricted to commercial.
Okay.
So, let's say on, on.
Okay, that's fine, that's.
It's main, if we have one business living and one business coming in, that's what a change of occupancy means. It's only for commercials.
Okay. And then the only other question I have is on these windows and doors. I've always been under the understanding that New York State does not require a permit for window replacement, so long as you're not changing the frame of the window. Is that not correct?
To a certain level, again, like I said, the energy code is kind of new. Uh, only has been around for, I wanna say maybe twelve, ten to twelve years. So now everybody's trying to be, uh, kinda like on the green side, trying to make sure, uh, they're holding that. So, even just on, what we're trying to protect is the wall envelope of the house.
Right.
So, what a house was forty, fifty, sixty years ago, and the window that they provided, it's not, even though it's the same opening as the window that you're trying to replace, it does have to adhere to the two thousand twenty energy code of New York State, with the win.
The replacement window has to?
Correct, yes.
Because in, when you first mentioned this, uh, to Christine, I hadn't met you yet at the time. Um, I, I did, I went online and I was looking at, um, the codes for a lot of the surrounding municipalities, and not one of them that I could find requires a permit for window replacement if you're putting it into the same frame.
Correct, and that, when, and that's something that if we wanna go, but when we go and, and replacing a window, sometimes we don't know, just even just to have it on, on the record of your property. If you, if we don't wanna go, whether, I'm okay with, but sometimes when you, if you tell me, I'm replacing a window, are you replacing just the size of the window, or just replay, how, how do, how are we gonna go about it? If we don't know the size of, if, if, I just, this came out because, uh, just on the, bro, somebody had, the, the house didn't have windows. So, we didn't have anything on, on record that, that was construction happening at that location.
Right.
So, the permit, it would just facilitate us for us to have an understanding that, hey, you have new windows, and that you adhere to the two thousand twenty code. Again, all that we're trying to protect, whether it's the size of the opening that was already, when the site plan was approved, or if it's a new window, all that we're trying to protect is the wall envelope to make sure that no heat is escaping the house.
And, and I wanted to add to what you had said. So, the town of Walch Hill, which you also, what do they have? Are they doing something for windows?
Wait, the.
So, one thing that you said to me that kinda sparked me on this personally was, if a homeowner gets some pricing on windows, which obviously also on homes, you get a price on windows, you think you're getting a really good deal, you could be getting windows that belong in a house down south, not in the northeast. So, really, the purpose of you even being involved in that was to protect the homeowner from kind of getting ripped off from the person that's selling it to them.
Correct.
But without associating a fee of some sort for a building permit, that's kind of where the fee came in, because how do you hold someone to coming here and getting it? And I believe the person who we're talking about on Highland Avenue wound up, you wound up going down there and looking at them. They were not charged any fee whatsoever for, for it, because there was nothing on it.
Correct.
But going forward, that's kind of where it came from, yes. Yes. I just wanted to explain where.
So, it isn't a requirement for the permit at this point in time, but it's your recommendation?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
My other question.
Everything, it was just a proposal, is that my recommendation?
No, I just wanted to make sure that I.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, it's, the proposal is seventy-five dollars for the permit.
Mm-hmm.
That's for one window or twenty windows?
Correct.
It's the same.
It's the same, yeah. The, the proposal, it just will cover doors, even if you're doing sliding doors, or your front door, or any windows, or any siding. And it, it's not, it's not, the, the fee's not gonna be associated for one window, 'cause when we get the permit, it's gonna stipulate the, the scope of the work, whether you're replacing one window, or you're replacing all the windows, it, it's just gonna cover the entire.
Now, you mentioned doors. If I'm gonna put a new storm door on, I would need a permit?
The doors, the door permit has been part of the minor alterations according to what I read that you, that the village has been using. If that's not correct, then I'm, my, my, my misread. One was already in place, but there have been permits for those before.
If they change the frame?
Correct.
Right, but if I'm just replacing my storm door?
Again, no, that's, yeah, yeah.
So I can replace the storm door, but I can't replace the window?
Correct. 'Cause the windows need to, need to adhere to the, again, it's all going tied up to the two thousand twenty code, and every, when you look at the residential New York State book on the state of New York, based on the topography of where you sit, the, the wind load and the snow load are different on all the locations. And you wanna make sure you are adhering to the location that you are.
And then the siding is also energy code, is what you're looking at?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
I'm gonna speak for Lance here, five minutes is on. Okay. Um, does anyone else on the board have a question for Javier? Um, all I wanna say is Javier will be here tomorrow and Thursday.
Correct.
Obviously, you weren't working today, that's why you got a Walch Hill shirt on, just to tell everyone that.
I followed, I followed. This is the brand here.
Yes, Javier has shirts, so, yes. Tomorrow, you'll see him in the building. Alright, thank you, Javier. Thank you for coming and introducing yourself, and, uh.
Of course.
I'm sure if we have any questions, Javier has his own cellphone now, and obviously, his email is working great. So, okay, moving on down. Who did I say, oh, DPW. Oh, Brian. Hello, John, how are you?
I just got a couple things.
No, no problem.
We updated the service area profile form for the New York Dick Safely. And November twenty, two thousand twenty-four water report, the Billsdale usage was thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and nine. The state prison's Dale usage was a hundred and eleven zero thirty-one.
And we've been working down at the park, we've put up a sign for the, and revealing on the twenty-first, Baker Hill. Uh, put up some snow fence down there. Uh, we cut the grass at the corner of School and Orchard, that was school there, uh, last week. Um, I had to check the water off the lake cemetery, and we've been picking up brush around as it's falling down, so. Um, also, just to let you know, if you stop there, we have some trees on Field Row that are leaning on power lines.
Okay. Definitely give me your, you have numbers?
Yeah, if you have.
Phone number, yeah.
Call them.
Yeah, well, get them pretty well.
Guys will like that for some.
Yeah, just if, if you have them, let me know. Thanks. That's it.
Um, thank you to the whole DPW department for all your help. Christmas tree and the Patriot tree, what else am I missing here?
Everything down there.
Yeah.
And all the lights up.
All the lights up.
The sign for the dedication, I won't forget that. Um, and the snow fence, 'cause I know that was a concern, and the picture you showed me today, John, was, uh, was, uh, perfect.
Remote control?
Yes, yes. Gotta love technology, I like that. So, thank you for that, and thank the guys.
You're welcome.
Moving right along. Trustee reports. Alright, Mr. Klaus, I let Diane go first last time, so I'll let you go first this time.
I don't have too much, I wasn't here last week, but, uh, just briefly, uh, the next twenty board meeting is technically scheduled for this Wednesday, if they have anything. I'll check it out and, uh, go to it if they do, if they have the meeting. The Old School Community Center just had the, uh, online cricket try this past weekend. Would like to thank everybody that participated, a lot of them. The other thing is, um, we haven't heard anything about, uh, the water grants that we're applying for, right?
Oh, we have, we have.
Anything to do on that?
Um, we didn't get it. I asked Delaware Engineering to kind of, uh, they're working on something on top of that, and I kind of asked them to maybe just give us an explanation of what we're looking at and why it wasn't, but, um, I will go through and see if Linka Yellow sent me something, but unfortunately, um, we did not get that grant.
It's too bad.
There's another grant that we didn't get also, but, um, I believe that was Christine, the grant we applied for the fire, firehouse, we didn't get for the floor. You told that?
The Old School, that one?
No.
Oh, the, um, I was not told, I overheard you talking about it, but I, I was not told.
Well, let's hold that news until that's official. If it is, um, listen, you get it, you don't get it. Unfortunately, uh, I think a lot's changed in Otisville between population and median income housing and whatever else. I was kind of very confident about, uh, working with the state prison on it, and I think Delaware Engineering was too, but, um, we didn't, it goes by scoring, and we didn't meet it for certain reasons. I did ask them to take our full grant and kind of break it apart, 'cause I know the concern is the water tank, and that's kind of what he's looking at, um, to come talk to us about. Again, not doing anything official, because they are not our engineering company, but, um, just some suggestions as far as what, uh, we can do going forward, so.
Okay, thank you. This is all I have.
Brian, what do you got?
Uh, Rob touched on most of the stuff for the fire company. Great job over the weekend. DPW, thank you for all the Christmas stuff, and having everybody be a part of that, all the celebrations, that was awesome. Um, so I don't really have much there. Um, still working with Benny, with getting our inventory correct at the lights. And the, I have a union, hopefully, we have a union meeting on January second.
Yeah. Mike says it doesn't look like a problem either.
So, everything looks like we should be set in those avenues.
All I wanna add is, um, Arjun Rockland themselves came through and did our streetlights on Highland Avenue. Uh, over by ten, I had someone on Highland Avenue called to say how bright it is, and has a couple concerns about the light.
Give us phone numbers.
I will talk to you about that after the meeting.
See if we can reduce the lighting.
Um, I didn't realize, and he was specific, that O and R actually came up, but, um.
They should be going, you should be seeing it throughout.
And I'm gonna get you a phone number for the one where the clock is, because that light seems to either stay on, go off, doesn't seem to be working correctly. And that's a fairly new, but still, that's an old sodium vapor light, so I shouldn't say.
That's on, is it on the corner of main?
Yes, yes.
That's on, that's, they should be getting that, so.
Okay, okay.
Working diligently on those things, so hopefully.
Looking good. Highland Avenue looks a lot different with all LED lights on, so, yeah. Alright, that's all I got. Alright, Lance, what do you got?
Only one thing, John, and, uh, at the, at the park, I know we talked about it. I got a point in about the tree. Person complained, they didn't like the way it was done. They liked the donut, the tree, but the tree that we've been planting, we haven't lost them. So, we're gonna leave the way you guys did it. We have not lost a tree at all. At the, at the training, at the same training, they suggest, tune it with a donut. You and I did it this way. But they also said, if what you're doing is working, we can still do it your way, even though they're the professionals. So, we're gonna leave it, 'cause the trees have not died. When I've listened to one person complain about it.
Also, just to let you know, we removed the water bags at the beginning of November, when I had the extra personnel, so they didn't get, didn't freeze up and break, so.
Hundred percent, they complained there was no water bags.
There was.
Um, December, when I have them on the trees then, where they were frozen, right?
Right.
So, why would you like?
I think it was the two new trees, but here nor there.
But the trees are living, they're surviving, no problem at all, so what you guys did, anyway, that's all I had about that. Thanks a lot for doing the sign for this and the snow fence, and everybody's going to appreciate all the work you guys have done in the fire department. That's all I have.
Diane?
Okay, um, ZBAs back on track, they have no new open applications. Um, I have talked with the chair and asked that they review the two most recent variance applications, because both of those projects are still open and ongoing, and it's been a while since they've been able to meet. So, she thought that was a great idea. So, their next couple of meetings, they do, they meet regardless of whether it's on the agenda or not. Next couple of meetings, they will use it to refresh over what those two variable variances require. And we still need to fill that vacancy. I'm gonna wait until after the holidays and then reach out again to the potential candidate.
I have one thing to add to that. I just reposted it. I'm gonna see if I get any feedback from it, but I will word it a little differently than when I reposted it, and we'll constantly contact it out and see if we get any likes, 'cause it was kinda stagnant.
Yeah.
Not too many people liked our post.
He might as well wait until after the holidays.
That's fine, that's fine.
For some reason, I have trouble remembering when the new planning board meetings are. Are they the first Wednesday of the month, or the second Wednesday?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Um, Historical Society had their open house, uh, on Sunday, big success. They had a lovely photo tribute to past president Anita Goldsmith, um, who had passed away just a minute week ago, so. That was very, very nice. Since, uh, this is probably our last meeting before the holidays, I just wanted to remind everybody to please do as much of your shopping locally as you can. These small businesses really depend upon our support throughout the year, but certainly during the holiday season. And they are the backbone of our community, so we wanna do what we can. Village vehicle and gas policy is still under review. Um, the water law, I wanted to thank Christine for giving us the information that she received from the other communities about their rates and regulations. One common thread that seemed to come through is that even the municipalities that don't charge a usage fee for the residents who opt not to hook up, do charge a maintenance fee to every resident in the district. And some of them gave the explanation for it, that, you know, if at any time in the future they were going to hook up, they would be benefiting from the maintenance of these mains, so that they, they have to then be part of, you know, the support for doing that. And that's not something we've ever, uh, thought about addressing, and I just, it, because it kept coming up in many of the municipalities, I thought it was something we'd wanna maybe consider. That may be the way to, to do it. Most of the municipalities seem to have a maintenance fee attached to the, uh, water bill in addition to the gallon usages. And their gallon usages, for the most part, bring it to more than what ours is. So, just going through that, but thank you, 'cause that puts things in perspective. The next few things don't really have to do with my particular assignments here, but Office for the Aging, um, prior to COVID, Office for the Aging's home-delivered meals program for seniors was a daily delivery. And they, uh, part of that was not just providing food, but was to have somebody checking up on the seniors each day. COVID came, the whole world changed, and for the last four years now, what their program has been is that once a week, they deliver a week's worth of frozen dinners. They put them in the freezer, and then the, the senior can heat them up as they need them throughout the week. Well, they've notified, uh, us that they are going back to daily deliveries. They're still going to be frozen, from what I understand, but, because they used to be hot meals. But they've asked us to help reach out to, because now, they have, they're, they're just meeting their volunteer quota with one delivery, uh, a week, so that if they're going to, seven days a week, they're going to need tremendously more volunteers. So I did, I gave Christine a copy of the flyer. I gave one to the mayor and I'm just asking if we could put it out any way that we can so that hopefully we can help them out. I don't know when this is going to start. Sometime when they get in the fall, here's probably. But, so that's that. Senator Skofus is sponsoring a stuffed animal giveaway Wednesday evening, tomorrow evening, no, not tomorrow, Wednesday evening, over at the youth center from 3:30 to 5:30. He, his office contacted hometown helpers and asked if we could give assistance in handing out the stuffed animals. They've notified the schools. They notified a couple of preschools. So if you know of any young children who would be interested, they have 200 stuffed animals. It's first come, first served, so show up. Hopefully they notified your school because I gave them the address and phone number and everything. But it's, it should be a lovely event and a nice way to kind of kick off things with the little kids. And last but not least, this Saturday, December the 14th, at 2 o'clock, up at Holy Name Cemetery, Wreaths Across America will be laying wreaths on every grave of a veteran in that cemetery. And every one of those wreaths was donated by local people, so kudos to everyone who participated. You're welcome to come. If you have people who are buried in the cemetery, you can personally lay the wreaths on their graves. If not, there's plenty of people who don't have any relatives left anymore and you could, you could help out with those. And that's all I have.
Okay, thanks Diane. Two things. Senator Skofus reached out to me also. We posted it, sent it out, constant contact. Any board members aren't doing anything on Wednesday afternoon, you're more than welcome to go up and hand out teddy bears, which I know some of you know, but I just want to tell all of you that if you're around, you have some free time, stop up and I'm sure it's going to be a good event. And as far as Wreaths Across America goes, I believe the, Phil, you're in the audience, you can answer to this. I believe the American Legion is the one that actually goes and marks off all of the graves over there. Do you guys help out with that or you do not?
We go there and put them out.
You put, no, no, not the wreaths, but do you mark the graves?
No.
So we, okay, okay. I was talking to Bob Edwards at our Patriot tree and I guess someone has the physical task of if anyone's done Wreaths Across America, you know that the graves are marked already, so that has to be a big undertaking too. It's pretty easy for the people that are laying wreaths because they're already marked and all you got to do is go over and lay the wreath down. But hopefully a lot of people are going to come out for that. Hopefully the weather's going to be pretty, I hope, not rainy, but I will say that twice, so come down to Holy Name Church.
Phil had something.
Just a quick comment on that. Last year, lady contacted me that her father was buried there, but you know, Bob didn't know that he was a veteran and so if there's ever anybody contacts somebody, you know, we'll, we'll make it happen.
Okay. Thank you. Excellent. Going on to the mayor's report here. Just a couple of things. Our next meeting is Monday, January 13th. We do not have a second meeting in December, so we have a little bit of time in between. Please come in, sign bills. I don't want anyone calling complaining they're not getting paid, so please try to make it to come in and do that. Why we don't have a meeting. Mobile DMV is going to be back here on Friday, the 20th, from 10 a.m. to 3:30. If you recall, they were not here last month because it was the only time that we had bad weather, so they will definitely be here then. Toys for Tots collection, I just want to add this. Thank you to the fire department for taking a box and having it up there. We got a tremendous amount of toys over the weekend for all of the events that happened up at the firehouse. I know because I carried it down here and the box broke on me, but they're all in here. There is a box, another box that we obviously have. Yesterday, I had gone to Dollar General. Our Dollar General did not have a Toys for Tots box. Talked to the manager and I actually brought a box down to them. So that box will be there till Sunday, probably around noon time is when I'll pull it out of there. So anyone that wants to donate toys, there's a collection box down at Dollar General. Our box will be here. I know we did a cutoff date of Wednesday, but our cutoff date's going to be Friday when we close the office. So if anyone wants to come and donate toys to either location, thank you. I wanted, one thing I didn't do last meeting is to thank the garden club for making the village look very festive for the Christmas and holiday season throughout town, so thank you to everyone that did that, including village hall. Christine, did Kate help you with this too?
Kate was the support, but you know.
Okay. All right, I just want to thank her too. I don't want to leave anyone out of that, so thank you. Onto more thank yous here. Thank you to the celebrations committee for making the firehouse tree lighting and everything else over the weekend successful. I did get to meet with the photographer that took pictures Sunday with, with Santa at the firehouse. If anyone went up for that, I actually got mine, came out pretty good, made me look better than what I thought. But also I have her cards that I got from her, so I was going to, whatever you guys do with it, I was just going to post it if anyone wants to hire her. December 21st, I just want everyone to know this, at 11 a.m., that's going to be the dedication of the Sleigh Riding Hill in the park. Hopefully we don't get a lot of anything on the ground between now and then, so we can actually make it to the back of the park. DPW already has the sign hung. It's covered, so if anyone walks around and wondering what that is, that will be unveiled December 21st at 11 a.m. Hopefully I did this. Okay, moving right along. Bold business. I told a little bit about this to Rory and I'm going to just say this. I want to make sure we get this right. I think kind of what Diane just kind of added, as far as in her comments about this too, I think can be incorporated into that. So I don't want to move forward on this right now, but again, we're going to push this to January. So anything you'd like to add to that, Rory?
No, I think I'm, no.
Okay. I know we've been working on this for a while, so we're going to work on it for a little bit longer and hopefully we're going to look back and say, well, hopefully the next one isn't going to have this much time involved, but I just want to make sure we get it right. So stay tuned for that one, fair enough. Amending to the current fee schedule, is that also obviously?
Well, I think that was part Javier's stuff, but I think when we say that, there could be some confusion because we're doing that.
The water law as well.
Yeah, two separate things, got it. Um, what's that? Quarterly reviews. Everyone knows what they need to do. Okay, fair enough. Moving right along.
And they're due at the next meeting. It's a short.
So really, the only person that's off the list this, this particular time is Lance, so the other three of you guys are on the list. Okay. New business. Firehouse pole barn floor. Yeah, let's talk about this and then I just want to get in some of that. We got estimates here. You guys were giving copies of. This is for the pole barn, not for the firehouse, just to straighten that out. We got two estimates, one from Finishing Touch Painting and one from Done Right Power Washing Painting. I guess if it doesn't come out right, it'll power wash it up. I like that. Any questions? One question should be our budget report, so I'll ask the question. Yes, yes, we are. Three big projects that we had to do was the pole barn was the electric, which is currently being worked on. The heat, which we already passed and this is really the, the final one for this year. Obviously going forward after January 1st, different story because that's how the current budget goes and obviously. Bobby, you have any questions? Just the latter, Mary, you have any questions?
Great contrast of this one loss and the other guy.
I will say this, finishing, finishing touch. Did the bathrooms, they also actually did the youth center for the town level, so we've been in both of those buildings to say.
Can I answer my question?
Yes, yes. He used to be a local guy, but I don't think he would. After I find out what these two think about it. Lance, you have any questions?
No, I, I'll look at the prices. So the, the other guy really doesn't want the job, I guess.
It's up the end, I'm like, wow.
More than five grand, I think it was 20 grand difference with the, same attack, so he basically said he doesn't want to do it, so. Have a problem going to Finishing Touch. They threw pork under town and barn and bathroom side.
Yeah, the only question I was going to have is if we knew of other projects they've done, but you answered it before I asked.
We did Slade Hill Firehouse, I know a couple of projects.
Good.
And I think he actually looked at the floors in the firehouse when we were going through to get, to look into that grant for the firehouse floors itself. All right, in that case, if, I'm sorry, did I miss something? You looked at me like I missed you, I'm sorry. Can I get a motion to approve Finishing Touch Painting for the total price of?
Twenty-six thousand.
Twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
How many, that motion, Finishing Touch for twenty-six eight hundred?
Can I get a second?
I'll have a second motion.
All in favor? All right, moving right along. One thing that I want to add about the, oh, just to tell you this, as far as the floor, since we just approved it. A couple of things have to happen before the floor guy can get in there, so I would imagine we're probably not looking until a couple of months. And I say that is, yeah, the electric has to get done first, heat, obviously second, and yeah, before he can get in there, but. Doors, we did it, so we're good. Well, we have doors.
Doors.
Yeah, well, hold on, that's all I'm on the guessing.
I know.
Door, yes, I'm going with you there. Water account 136 is asking for a payment arrangement. Do you mind rereading what they asked for so it's fresh in our minds?
And just so you know, usually her bills are between like, like 150 to 300 depending on the time of the year, so. This was a little bit that she had. Good afternoon. I am requesting for the village board to please approve a payment arrangement for my current water bill. It is due 12/9/2004. The total amount is 839 dollars and 23 cents. I would like to be able to pay 439.23 by 12/9/2004 and 100 dollars each month for the month of January, February, March, and April. This bill is almost triple what my previous bills are. She did pay the large part already.
She paid 439.23.
Did she figure out that she had a leak? Yeah. Can I get a motion to approve us to do a payment plan as read for water account number 136?
How make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Yeah, that's exactly.
Exactly.
That's a great question.
Can only, can only make that payment? Do you make another payment with him, yes?
Motions and resolutions. Board motion to approve the Village of Otisville Town and Mid-Hold Fuel Agreement for 2025 with no changes to the previous year and authorize myself to sign it. Can I get a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Board resolution to approve the Town and Mid-Hold Village of Otisville Fire Protection Contract for 2025 in the amount of 357,905 dollars and no other charges to the contract from previous year and authorize myself to sign the contract.
We approve the resolution, that's read.
Second. Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
One thing I'm just going to say before audience participation, I do need an executive session, which is going to happen at the end. That being said, audience participation, anyone in the audience want to come forward? Please come up to the podium, state your name, where you live and.
I was just going to ask a quick question on that.
Sure.
Actually, just a, is that around the same as what they always, so the town?
As far as for the contract?
The contract.
That's with the, with, I believe.
The increase.
Okay, 3% rate?
That's with the increase, huh?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Audience.
Audience participation. Come on up.
Phil Allen, since six a.m. attorney, Avenue of Otisville, New York, two things. One, we got the banners down the day before the snow came. And it's kind of weird. It looks like if you ride down Highland Avenue, it's like.
What's missing?
Yeah, it looks, it's different, but they will be going back up before Memorial Day, you know, I don't know exactly when. And the other thing, I haven't been in here officially. Place looks awesome and I particularly like the tracks. And I really like the guy up on the top left here.
It's why he's on top.
I'm not saying who that is up there. Place looks very, very nice.
Thank you, thank you. Phil, one thing I just want to add is the agreement we had with the other company to do banners. I haven't gotten official answer from them and our agreement has kind of ended. It never really started under half. So I just want to say, let's talk about some other roads that we kind of bypassed before you hang the banners back up next time. We have a lot more room and I know you have more souls, so we have a lot more room to talk and say. Thank you. Anyone else? Audience participation. How you doing, Allison?
Good. Allison Miller-Tamnoff here on behalf of the Old School at 21 School Street in Otisville. Just two questions. I know last time I was here, which was I think the first meeting in November, we had a discussion about the trash and the dumpster. And at that point, I think it was a little bit up in the air as to when the dumpster was actually going to be removed. It is still there, so I was just wondering how long it will be there. We do have trash cans. We had talked last time about where we would put them. I just wondered if you knew. You had mentioned at one point, end of the year.
Hold on, hold on, we're going to answer. We're going to answer and then we're going to ask you. To my understanding, because I asked this question, to my understanding, the billing cycle ends at the end of the year. Am I correct in that? Therefore, we, since we billed you for it, we were leaving it to the end of December.
It's the end of, no, no, it's the end. It's a, it's a weird billing cycle.
So what is the end?
Because it's our fiscal year, so it actually ends at the end of November.
She stayed, yeah, because she, she stayed in November 30th, then the end of the year was tossed out, so I, I just looked for.
You have garbage cans?
We do have garbage cans.
We'll remove, we'll, if you want to remove, we'll get it out there. That's fine. There was some confusion because I was thinking it was the end of December after talking to you guys, so I apologize for the, for the inconvenience. We will.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to.
We'll pick garbage tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Well, tomorrow's garbage day, so if you want to just take the whole thing with the garbage.
Yes.
There you go.
Much garbage, they picked up the rest of the relative.
Good. And my other question is, I know since the middle of November, one of our directors, we've been trying to reach out and make contact with Javier, so I'm glad that you're here this evening. You had mentioned, Brian, that he is going to be here tomorrow, Wednesday. Do you, I don't know who I should talk to.
No, no, no.
Does he have regular hours? And if so, what are they? And if not, how can he be reached so that we can?
Before you leave, I will have Javier hand you his business card.
Perfect.
He, he does, he is here certain days of the other week, yes. It's not set hours to answer your question, but he is here, as I mentioned, tomorrow and Thursdays.
Do you know what time?
Javier will tell me.
I'm here, I'm usually here the same business hours, like we.
As the office, as the clerk.
Usually I try to be here an hour or an hour after, so like.
Perfect. Okay.
And you have, my business hours, my cell phone number, you can just reach me out there anytime. I'll try to reply as much as I can.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Anyone else? Audience participation? Thank you. Moving right along. Can I get a motion to approve the bills? General, 21,400, should have plus. Nineteen and nineteen cents. Water, 7,311.23. Fire, 3,366.42. And capital, 5,566.64.
Make that motion to pay the bills that read by the mayor.
Thank you. All in favor?
All right.
Okay, let's just go through this and we already have executive session on here, so. Bob, do you have any closing comments? Fair enough, okay. Brian, do you have any?
Just wanted to thank all the celebrations people, firehouse, DPW for all your work and hopefully everybody has a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year since we all see.
Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
We won't have another meeting until then, so stay safe, stay merry.
All right, Lance?
Happy holidays and see you right next year.
Diane?
However you choose to celebrate, just celebrate safely.
Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, everything else that's going to be. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
With no intention of.
With no intention of.
Returning, which means everybody can.
With no intention of returning.
Well, we're just returning, but you know. Well, we're just returning, but you know.
All in favor?
Alright.
Oh, just so everyone knows and wants to hang out in here, the camera's on while we're in executive session, just. Not now. I, you saw, I already replied, you got the email, so, yeah, so, we'll talk more about that, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that I got it, so I always said. Giving advisement to the board. I'm sure you did.
The kids, the kids get toys and then they forget they have them, and it's just like.
I saw one that was pretty cool, like, the way that people have the bathroom, like, young man, big roof, like, Detroit, get rid of work there.
Booked only like for one. Just so you know, um.
But it's not ever bugging you, um.
No, no, not at all, I mean, anytime.
How long, let's drive it, I guess.
Well, some places do, but problem is with plastic, so, you know, is the line freezes because your house, your house in the street.
Surgery will do it, the anesthesia and everything else.
If it's copper.
Hopefully you'll have more energy now, it takes a lot.
I remember, you know, it's funny how warm it's got, because years and years and years ago, all of those, uh. Water blinds on Main Street would freeze, and we'd have to probably get me to come with his welder, you know, to.
This one, in the sailor uniform?
Tool would be on that hole like that.
Ah, look at him.
This is only my chance, if I have this picture. That's all, yeah, that's all copper, that's all, that's all copper, that's how it last week means a copper. That was copper, right? I got the cigarette.
Yeah, I love it, just my coffee like that.
Yeah, I've got the cool, current cigarette on your mouth.
Someday, uh, we'll have to replace that, cause it's got like, in the floor during the week, but I have a, a big dent.
A lot of sewers.
She's good, she's good, yeah.
She's still cranky.
Giving a lot of orders.
She's still cranky?
I thought foolish.
Does you enjoy in the service?
Yeah, I'm not enjoying. Nineteen sixty-nine. Matter of fact, that day, that I, that was signed on, Lois went to Woodstock. I swear to God.
Anyone know who drives the white Subaru?
White Subaru?
The white Subaru?
Is it?
Well, I like, it's pretty tight next to where I'm parked, and I don't wanna.
I'm alright, tired, what else I do, right?
Like a sporty little Subaru?
Never end, I guess you must like it though, right? Busy brain?
They kissed me, basically.
I should go tell them, they need to move it, cause if it's nobody in here, then it's obviously somebody that's in there.
Bob's got a truck, he's got.
Yeah, I know Bob is.
Diane, did you borrow it?
No.
For staying up till morning?
Is it like, did she, he dressed some kind of like a sporty car, just a Subaru, my first sporty car.
Is Lance's car parked in, so can you pull yours apart up so she can, yeah, like, get out of the car?
Oh, Lance.
He's right next to her.
Oh, Lance, that's bad.
It's not like, it's like.
Oh, the old my car?
Yeah, I think it just looks, looks like a car over there, he's like right next to her, walks in front of her. Yeah, it was a parking lot, back.
Yeah, it does, it seems like there are a lot of people there tonight.
Over here, I got one spot, I'm gonna go follow up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that is true.
Do you stop, see the baby?
Yeah.
What's your name?
Cassie.
Cassie.
Should maybe be ready since Saturday?
Yep.
Congratulations.
She went in last night and they started the new summer.
Okay.
Nine thirty this morning.
And Mrs. Cooper excited?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Another phone, these, I don't know.
Aw, cute.
Yeah, rocky today. You grow up. Talk back to you.
She looks like Cooper, he was a baby. And he, and he has a video with, it's, uh, Callie.
We talk back. Lost you all for too much.
Congratulations, grandpa again, it's exciting.
Oh, congratulations, like, talking about your family.
That's you, based on his work.
Little problem, yeah, God bless.
Oh, she's cute.
Now, who's that, man?
This is Aaron's third one.
Oh.
She looks like Cooper.
And he wants two more.
Yeah, a lot, yes, absolutely.
They both want two more.
It's cool. And here's Callie, in a video.
Only gets harder today.
The older you get.
She keeps starting to grind it, you know.
How old is she now? She's like a girl one.
Well, you know, it's old enough, right?
They're too busy traveling the world, wrestling and all that stuff. Yeah, you know the rules.
She have a heart, huh?
Yeah.
Good luck, grandpa, bring them all to the fair, you know.
How old is Callie?
Fourteen months.
They're gonna have their hands full?
Yes.
My sister's too young, it starts like fourteen months.
Richie and Bobby, they, they were only, they were eighteen months apart.
I'm trying to read all my control questions, eleven thirty or twelve?
Probably get there somewhere between that, I don't like to wait until right after twelve.
No, I don't want to worry about that.
Eleven thirty, you sit around a lot.
I know, and you would assign tables, it's not like we have to like, I'm gonna see, yes.
You wanna get there and get your ticket, I remember I get some cash, I already got.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so much is gonna be good up there, so.
There always does seem to be like somebody, there's almost always like somebody or something there that will win like prize after prize.
Well, almost everybody.
I'm gonna use that list, and put that pipe up, in the firehouse, when you do it right, I'm gonna do it. I don't do that. Just drive a truck, and put it up.
Maybe you just had mentioned that.
Diane said, we weren't the table, and how many, how many seats are at those tables, eight or ten? Cause she said it was.
They'll do, they just don't like flights as much. If you're gonna talk to one of the guests today, I think no problem, that's up.
Kathy and Liz, right, Matt and Tom.
Compression, there's no. We're not gonna stop, I ain't no stopper, Bob, you know, that was.
Unless it's a table, it's ten.
I gotta get another, we can get another one, they got the.
We should have, do seats last year, I don't know.
Yeah, Bobby, you know, I'm here, Bobby's out there with his freaking cigar, and.
Part, I don't know.
Cause I know how you said, she was, um.
He was good at it, though, you.
She's not, you hide, she couldn't come, she's picking up her daughter, picking up.
No, that's the holiday, that's our other party.
Oh, our party, so.
But, um, like, I had, I was gonna try to change, so she might wonder, but, oh, can't we? Although.
Unique.
Can we use what she's talking, cause she's in Florida, so maybe she's in Florida, yeah?
Yeah.
I don't know if she's at Town Hall today, cause Brian actually was called and got the voice out, so maybe she goes back.
Need more.
What's the problem, they don't teach the stuff in school anymore, they don't teach.
They don't teach it at home, they, they show me kids up.
What you do, the problem is you're too busy, too busy taking care of everything else.
I was just talking to Robbie about that before, he said, you start with the overseas, go type, and see what they, what they offer. He said he wanted to be a carpenter. That's cool, but whatever he wants to do, but.
Ah, man, you know, you did it, either you're busy, or there's nothing, the same thing when I did the electric, when I had that high school, there was nothing going on. You know? Engine operating engineers, that's why I tried to get Johnny to go back, at least there's always something going on. But nowadays, everything's completely used, some over talking to some guys, with all the new devices and instruments, everything's electronic, you gotta know.
My buddy drives a bulldozer, Richie Callahan, from Soya, he's always got like the stuff, it's all GPS. I'm like, so what's the point of you, what do you do?
You just a figure.
You just hit home on reverse, and there's no steering wheel, there's no thing, he's just sitting there, with all these screens and stuff, like, yeah.
Talking to Billy, he says, well, they said it, and we're digging, the excavator tells you when to stop, and it's like, damn. Which is good, during that, but.
Tell breaks. Ever worked in a rain down, dig it? How good's that? Sorry, I liked about PS, big bear pipes, when we were not busy, they had me in the yard, digging, we're gonna have to stash, it feels like, cause some guys did, and they're, oh, there it is, I'm like. What do you guys, guys, other guys would dig like two feet past the one side, and then you just knock, you know, sort of falls, and then you do your thing, you bag it, and good to go, other guys, you shovel on the whole thing.
Biggest thing, everybody's using, they want everybody to go to, is the back trucks, yes, but. But they're safe, you know, they get the job done, you know, break out the utilities, and, which out here, we're lucky, we don't have any other utility, you go like, Town and Wal, Hill, City Middle, Taps. Yeah, we're not getting a year or no.
No, what did you go out yesterday? Thinking that earlier, this is pancake breakfast, sauce and pancake flipping job.
Maybe, maybe William is unlicensed, he's not that champion, find a place to take Johnny and him, and then. Up my dad's, like, my stepmom named, named all the years, I was like.
Kinda hard?
Kinda hard to go up there and.
Two shots, Ali.
It's pretty sad when, if she don't get out and feed him when she's supposed to, cause I come up on her porch. One night, the, the black bear came up on the porch knocking on the door, like, uh. You coming? What's going on? He's coming out here to feed us.
I just hope somebody got that five hundred pounder, almost five hundred pounder then by. What's it wider, right? Let's grab one, let's move it all around here. I said, we can have that, anything?
The one guy there at the gas station, he's a member of Cuddabackville, but, I mean, he got a nice one with a boat.
Yeah.
He got that up on top of, uh, my tush, brother.
I think Boomer down there, or something, off there too, the, the nuts.
Nice tent corner right here in the village, it was running down Highland Avenue.
Really?
Come out of the cemetery, you know, almost, early morning, come to work at four o'clock, they just running down Yellow, and I'm like, just get out of there. Finally, he cut across Bob Bennett's yard and.
Where are you?
You go down by the ball field every night, they're all down there. Just chilling out, they don't bother, they know, they can't be bothered.
Very quiet.
Did you get ejected, Bob?
Hmm?
Did you get ejected?
No, I had to go. Just about, huh? You know what our next meeting is, Carrie Lee?
Uh, yes, it's my. It is, uh, January twenty-fourteenth at seven o'clock.
January fourteenth? At what time?
What's it say, what's it say?
Oh, shit, I'm walking out.
Did you tell me, by the way, John, I was gonna ask you, did you, were you reaching out to Benny about the smoke thing, or you wanted me to?
I could, so I can talk to him, I think, I'll talk to him, I'll double check with him.
Okay.
Yeah, but, he, he, he see a problem.
Yeah, I gotta reach out to Lockhead, whenever they get a move, put off to do it, yeah. I wonder if I ask him before he leaves, if you could, cause he told me he would let me know who it was, maybe he could just.
Yeah, cause they changed, even the guy that, that had a park, he retired too this year.
Can tell you, let you know, contact, maybe he could just stay now.
The guy that charged us parks department for a town hall, too?
Uh, yeah.
He, he retired too.
Yeah.
And I see Mike, like I said the other day, he's working for HM, he's enjoying retirement. He's. Ten of years.
Do we know who's taking it?
Nobody's, not yet.
So I had talked, I haven't sent him since, well, I've seen him, but I had talked about it since, um.
Probably have somebody in mind, but I don't know, he lost job.
Sorry, it's a point. When did they switch to a point, I think it was at one point, right?
I don't know, cause he's been there, because they take care of the water and everything, that's the whole thing.
I don't know, I'm just wondering, cause like, most towns are.
Well, he was in the water, he was head of the water department at one time.
Yeah, and he still carries.
I'd include it to all of it.
Yeah, I just wonder if they ever, if they, I would assume at one point it was elected, but maybe it wasn't, maybe not.
Who knows? Sometime, I know there's a garbage, I'll, sometime between tomorrow and Wednesday, if you have somebody who does. Sometime, my very best of garbage tomorrow, sometime between tomorrow and Wednesday, if you have somebody available, can you ask them to come over and help me get that stuff downstairs?
Johnny being the most...
The empty box is just garbage, but it was raining today and the thing was already locked when I was in here consolidating.
Yeah, on Thursday, it's gonna get cold.
Oh, is it, Friday's supposed to be almost sixty?
Nice.
No.
Yeah, my phone says fifty-nine.
On Friday?
Wednesday.
Oh, Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, what, Friday's gonna be cold.
After Wednesday, it's dropping.
Drops again?
It's not gonna be raining and cold on the same days, and we're not gonna have ice, are we gonna have ice?
Sunday it's supposed to be raining in between thirty-one and forty, so...
Yeah. Met, yeah, getting one too. I'll tell you what, those presses gotta go.
Yeah, I mean, I have to say him at all, but that's what it does.
I'm chilling too. You had seen you.
Can I get a motion to come out of the executive session?
I'll make them, okay, second.
All in favor?
Diane?
Can I get a motion to close the meeting at eight eleven?
Make the motion, close the meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I never called.
Do you need the motion to adjourn?
I do.